Give us your input back, we really do appreciate that. And I do see the leader of the Boys and Girls Club here. Okay. Okay, with that in mind, I have, we'll have a roll call and after that, we'll have the invocation by Pastor Juan from Live Again Ministry. And then after that, the young lady with the black boots and the black shirt. And she's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance and we'll be on the road. So with that, a roll call.
Councilmember Agency Director Jeffra. Smith.
Here.
Cilio.
Is here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Basaki.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Hearns.
Yes.
Do you have a quorum?
And we wanna go ahead, gentlemen, if you all agree, we'll excuse Councilmember Jeffra.
Okay, of course.
That's a yes, so ordered. And let's go then with the invocation, Pastor Juan if you would. And we'll stand and remain standing.
Lord, we come before you this evening, first of all, to give you thanks for the freedom that we can assemble in this way, Father. I just pray for guidance and there be praises in Jesus' name.
Amen. Remain standing, young lady if you would, and this is the flag.
Right here in your heart, pray for me. Our president, the United States, or which is God.
Thank you very much. We see it. And I believe that first order of business is a national purchasing institute too. Ms. Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award to you. As a result of the hard work and dedication of our purchasing staff, I'd actually like to ask them to come up, Kathy Patraski and Rhonda Armstrong, because they really did earn this award. I did not. The award was presented to the City of Lancaster at the California Association of Public Purchasing Officers Conference in February. That's a mouthful. This is the third time this award has been received by the City of Lancaster, and we are just one of 54 government agencies nationwide, including part of Canada, so it's a very difficult award to receive. The program is sponsored by several different agencies, including the National Purchasing Institute, the Institute for Supply Management, California Association of Public Purchasing Officers, Florida Association of Public Purchasing Officers, and the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing. There are several different criteria that we need to meet in order to earn the award, including measures in innovation, professionalism, integration of best practices, and fiscal responsibility. This award represents an opportunity to compete and improve against a set of nationally-recognized and professional standards that define procurement excellence. We are continually striving to provide the most efficient purchasing practices to our department, vendors, and ultimately, our citizens. So with that, I'd like to present our award to you and recognize again Kathy and Rhonda for their hard work, because they truly are the ones that have earned this award for us.
Okay. You gonna come up, or you want me down there with you?
Mr. Mayor, I'd love to take a picture with you, man.
I'd love it.
Kathy, can you stick the paper behind you? Yeah, that'd be better. Okay. Maybe one, two, three, five, four, five. Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say this, Chief Marrow, with staff, please understand that we on the day have recognized the fact that we didn't do this, you did. And we're just here to receive it and enjoy receiving it. But thank you all so much for your hard work and commitment to good services. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think this just goes to show that, you know, you can, you can yell at your mayor and your city council members about how we spend your money, but you can't yell at our staff. We give them direction and they do the absolute best job they can. When we give them direction, they make your tax dollars stretch. And here's the proof right here.
Can I turn it around like this? Ladies and gentlemen, on your, on your agenda, you'll see that we're making a presentation tonight to the Boys and Girls Club and also to a young lady who has gone far and beyond that of the natural and normal duties and responsibilities. I would like to take advantage of Jay, Jay Duke, and say something about him, because I was on the Boys and Girls Club board for many years, way back when I was just starting on the City Council, which was 18 years ago. And we hired this young brother on and told him he had to actually kinda make his own payment somehow. And he took that and look what we have today, here in the Antelope Valley, both in Palmdale and here in Lancaster. A wonderful Boys and Girls Club. So Jay and all of the staff, thank you so much for that, and I'd like for you to come forth and let me present to you, and then the young lady who, which, which one is, that's Ms. Washington. Oh, okay. So Jay, whoever you'd like to stand with here?
Sure.
It's my pleasure to introduce the board president, Susan.
Board Member Harold.
All right. You all can come on up. Basically, all this says is, is congratulations. I have to come over closer to me, 'cause I want you to use this mic. Boys and Girls Club for the Antelope Valley. Lancaster City Council commends the Boys and Girls Club for their Youth of the Year Program. So we just want you to know that we definitely appreciate that, Jeanette and all of you, so take a, take a little picture of us. Now, I got one for you. This whole town.
You just stand there and look.
Okay. Stand in the middle.
Now, before you leave, you may wanna say something about this. And, young lady, I think that just a short while ago, I was over there for a function, and she was there, her little brother, or?
That was her last, last year's Youth of the Year, Anthony.
And that was her brother?
No, no.
Okay.
Another, another good-looking Boys and Girls Club child.
Basically, what this says to you is that we commend you for going past those life challenges and achieving what you wanted to achieve. And basically, what we want you to know tonight is, young people like you, working along with a team like this, that makes the City of Lancaster the best it can be. There's no question about that. Because that pulls from the street, bring into an environment for which you learn and have fun learning. And I've been over there many times, Jay, so we appreciate that. So, young lady, this is Shamika Washington. We thank you so very much for being a wonderful young lady.
Let me try it one more time.
One more time. I messed it up for you.
Thank you.
If you wanted to say anything?
Yes. Shamika embodies everything about Boys and Girls Club, partially because of the guidance that she receives from the person who I forgot to point out, the leader of the pack, Jerry Augen. Jerry, will you please stand up? This young lady represents what Boys and Girls Club is all about. She's a good kid, she's kind, she's sweet, and just everything you could possibly want in a, in a young lady. And we're very proud of you. Jerry's gonna cry. That's what she does. And would you like to say a few things?
Of course, yeah. Okay. All right, not playing. First of all, I wanna thank Jay and Jerry and Waste Management, and everybody that works with the Boys and Girls Club, and the kids there, the staff there, Melissa, and everybody else that works there. The kids, and my family.
And the councilwoman, the mayor.
And everybody. So, thank you.
This is Martha Zieg, and he's a good guy.
And I'm gonna take an opportunity to, as the sponsor, Waste Management is so proud to recognize youth and for all of the good things that are going on in our community. We always hear about all the bad stuff that's happening, and there's really good things happening. And Waste Management is proud to be a sponsor, and we are proud to give you a certificate, a gift certificate, to help you with school supplies for winning this award. So, good job, very good.
One of you ensure it? No? Okay. Go ahead if you needed to say something. Okay.
Okay, since you put congratulations and thank you.
Okay, very good. Council, I have not, and Vice Mayor, I have not asked you all about this, I think I mentioned it to a couple of you. We, I would like for you all to permit me, even though it's not in the program, not in the agenda, two young people, one from Peat Knight High School and the other one from Eastside High School. As you all remember, I came to you, brought a program to you, to ask you to join with Palmdale and with the Antelope Valley Union High School District, and you all supported that. And what they wanna do, each one of these young ladies, is take just a few moments, and I told them they could have a maximum of three minutes, each. And there's two of them. And I don't know if Mr. Morell wants to say anything, but Mr. Morell may want to just introduce these young ladies in very short order and have them to come up and speak. So, would you permit me to do that? Can I, can I do that at this point?
Of course.
Is that all right for me to do it?
Of course.
Okay. Ron? Okay. So, it's not in the agendas, I wanted you, I wanted to get permission to do that, so here we go. Mr. Morell, who is over that whole package, and took the responsibility to run this program at the Peat Knight High School and also at the Eastside High School. Now, whoever the two young ladies are. It'll be a young man and a young lady. And we, one of our extraordinary youth advisors is gonna introduce them, okay? Ms. Morell, we appreciate you, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Priya Lackenpaul. I'm 26 years old.
Use that mic on your right if you would, please.
On my right? Hold on. It doesn't work. Left, right?
Yeah, that's mic, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm Priya Lackenpaul. I'm 26 years old. I'm a youth advisor at Eastside High School. I love my job, really. I mean, these students are amazing. From the time when I first met these students here, standing in front of you, they weren't who they are today. They were very lost and not on the right track. And I am a mentor, as well as my peers here, and we are so happy and so thankful and lucky to be working with these young youth. And I'm gonna go ahead and introduce them, one at a time.
Okay.
Say something, and what this program has done for them as individuals.
Did, did you tell us anything?
Hi, my name is Chanel Kels. I go to Peat Knight High. I'm 16 years old, and the program has done me good. I got my grades up from all Fs to Bs and As now, and I'm doing real good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morell Miller, go to Peat Knight High School freshman. This program has done a lot for me, got my grades up, and I've been in a better place than ever since I started this program.
Hi, my name is Jaja Trippley. Since I've been a part of this program for two, two months, I'm a 10th grader too. So far, as I've been into this program, this program did a lot for me. I got kicked out of Eastside. Before I got kicked out of Eastside, I had straight Fs. It brought my grade up. Before I got kicked out, I brought my grade up to the point where I had nothing but As and Bs and Cs on my report card. And then, like, it made me mad because I got kicked out, and then I was like, I was about to give up. Then I had Pri, Tina, Artwan, Jonathan, and Tavon by my side the whole way, and it was like, you ain't gonna give up, we ain't gonna let you give up. And then, I got kicked out, went to Desert Winds or Desert Sands behind Eastside, and then less than two, less than a week, I had, I got, what, 60 credits. And I just wanna say, I hope I can keep this program around more, 'cause it changed my life around a lot.
Hello, my name is Davian Cathcart. I'm 16 years old. I attend Eastside High School. I'm in 11th grade. My case with the program is kinda different, because I just been released from the California Youth Authority for the negativity gang lifestyle that I choose to live. So, being part of this program, it helped me keep my head on straight. When I got out, got out of the California Youth Authority, all I knew that I needed to do well, I needed to exceed them, like. And so, when I went to Eastside High School and I was released, I found this program. The program that I was in, is like, I'm the example for the program. It's me getting out, I stay focused in school, I make good grades, As and B student, and I'm not the negative child that I was, once was. I grew up and matured a lot, and I'm also a youth leader in this program. I talked to a lot of the students at East School, Peat Knight, and also Eastside, I told them the lifestyle that I lived, and the gang lifestyle that I will lead them to places that they don't wanna be, to things that they don't wanna go through. So, just being in this program, it helped me keep my head on straight. And I mean, I believe every child and every student that go attend schools, that should be involved in this program. Because it's not, it's not mandatory, it's voluntary. So if you volunteer, all you're doing is volunteer your time to come talk to people that are willing to listen and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morell, I, I'd like for you to just take about one, one 60-second thing there and tell them where the program came from, or something like that.
For the board members, probably in about a week and a half, you'll get a very definitive, comprehensive report that everything has taken place since January the 7th, when we went on board. Astonishing, astonishing involvement on the part of both campuses, Eastside as well as Peat Knight. As you know, Peat Knight had to go through some, almost a trauma, traumatic experience just a few months ago. They weren't as receptive as we thought that they ought to be. It turns out now that they had bought into the program. We are, we have students in the classes with the teachers. Almost every day, the requests have exceeded our ability to maintain it. We've done the necessary due diligence every morning and every evening for safe passage. We've broken up some, some incidents that could have been escalated into something that you would've seen in the paper. But to me, more important than anything else, we didn't say a word to them as to what to say. I didn't even hint or talk about what their responsibility was. I didn't wanna do that. That was directly from them. They, and I could go through on and on, we could've brought, we had 65 girls in our Girl Talk Program just the other day. We just met with Brent Neal to see if we could get a bus to begin taking kids home for the after-school activities that we have now, that have exceeded everyone's expectations. Talked to the principal, even Ms. McDougal at Peat Knight has finally acknowledged, and this was one of the, the God-sent programs that we could've had for our youth in this program. And I thank you so much for having enough faith to give it a chance. We will give you something very definitive, very comprehensive, all of the data and all the information that you can look at and make a real valid and a well-informed judgment on how this program has proceeded, okay? And I thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to come in off the agenda, and thank everyone for doing that. And I think it was prompted, partially because we were invited to speak on the 19th at the Palmdale, because this is a joint effort on the part of both this, both these municipalities, and you're both gonna reap great rewards. Thank you.
Does any of you have any questions?
Yeah, we do have a question.
Anybody have any questions to Mr. Morell? Mark? Mark, we really appreciate you stepping up to the plate to make sure that we got the proper information to make the decision that we've made. So, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you, and Ms. Morell, thank you so very much. Young people, thank you all so much, and keep up the good work. Keep your head on straight. Additional items to be removed, Mr. City Manager? Okay, and public business from the floor? And agendaized items?
Yes, sir. We have speaker cards on CC5 and CC7.
CC5 and CC7. Any, okay, any other?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move right along to the agency action, the consent calendar. Anybody ready to approve that?
New adoption, RCC 1 and 2.
Please cast your vote. Unanimous and so ordered, thank you very much. Now we'll go to the consent calendar, with the exception of CC5 and 7. Are there any other items to be pulled? And that's with the exception of 5 and 7?
Right.
Okay. Please cast your ballot. Unanimous and so ordered, and CC5. Somebody pull CC5.
Darren Parker.
Oh, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Is CC5 or 7, or both?
I think both of them, they're both related, the same developer, and I can actually wait and speak on them both at the same time, they're relating to the same issue.
This time.
Okay, so, if it pleases, you know, I'm trying to do my best. Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the council, distinguished community members, my name is Darren Parker. I'm here tonight as a resident from the Westview Estates. I've humbly risen before this council before to talk about the issues that the 23 residents are facing out in 90th Street West. As I've said before, we have an issue with our water pressure. The mayor was so kind to come out there to speak directly with the residents at one of our Town Hall Homeowner Association meetings, as well as our former city manager, Mr. Bob LaSala, to hear firsthand what the situation was. And in candor, I can tell you simply, there have been times where we have to use bottled water in order to flush our toilets. You cannot turn on the sink and have a shower at the same time. And even though public workers have worked diligently to improve that situation, even today, we're experiencing some of those same issues that we experienced for the last 11 months. Our track is new. The developer has asked that the city take over the assessment and, and the maintenance of the landscape around our community, as well as CC5, which is the property on 20th Street West and H8. I think it is appalling that a developer would come here to what I call God's country and take advantage of our good elected people and our good, our good community folk. We were voted the most friendliest business, excuse me, as we read on the board, we were the most business-friendly government in all of the county of Los Angeles, and yet we have developers that would take advantage of good citizens that look just to invest into our community and to be here for the long term. With that being said, I would ask that you deny their request to take over the assessment until Kay Hopnannian and their associates have completed what they promised to this community, to the elected leadership, and to the staff by putting in the plans that would enable families to live at 90th Street West and Avenue I with the same quality of life as you have here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is, these are items that we probably need to talk about. I certainly understand what he's talking about. So, okay, all right. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and also Mr. Parker. Certainly, we have been aware for some time, for that full period of 11 months, and perhaps even before then, about some of the concerns expressed by the 23 property owners at Westview All I can say to you is that there are established procedures for conditioning developers on those things that are to be done in order for them to be allowed to proceed with construction of a development. And once those conditions have been determined and approved by the Planning Commission, sometimes by the City Council, then it's the staff's responsibility to ensure that those conditions are in fact met. Staff of the City of Lancaster does not set conditions for water improvements and other types of improvements that are utility-related. Rather, especially on the water side, those improvements are conditioned by the county waterworks for this particular tract. In all cases, the developer has delivered what was conditioned upon that tract. It was only because of some, I think perhaps miscalculation by the county initially, that water pressures were significantly lower than what was desired. I can share with you that in, you know, most recently, our building official personally went out, engaged several irrigation systems at the peak use times of the day, at the second floor of the property most distant from the water supply connection, to take water pressure and water flow measurements, and found them to be within the code. We feel, we are convinced that the water system does meet code requirements and have no further power, if you will, to do anything more to require waterworks. We did require waterworks, or work with the community to have a, an additional pressure booster station to be placed in that, in that area, and that's been in operation, and that's the reason why pressures are, by the tests that we have conducted at those peak use times of the day, have met code requirements. As far as the acceptance of these improvements, and, you know, they include drainage maintenance systems by several different developments, and CC Item 5 included in there are development that is under the ownership and the active particip, uh, construction by Kay Hopnannian or Forecast Homes. And then in CC7, it's for the landscape maintenance work that was performed at this particular tract. Those were conditions imposed upon the developer, and the developer has fully satisfied those conditions. And I don't think that we have any means or reason to deny at this time taking those over into the city for our operation and maintenance. Council may feel differently than that, but, you know, that is where I have to stand at this point, because again, my responsibility is to make sure that the conditions that are imposed are met, and then when they are met, to accept them, present them for the acceptance by the City Council. So that's why they're here before you. It's not because that developer necessarily is getting out of anything that would improve his conditions or his posture as it relates to Westview Estates. The annexation actions have been completed in both cases, those fees have been paid, and once the individual property ownership changes hands, the next year's assessment is paid by that property owner and not Hopnannian. Hopnannian will still be obligated to pay any assessments for either drainage or for landscaping until such time as property ownership changes hands. If there are questions of the council that will better clarify this that I haven't addressed, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay.
Can I report for council? I'm Mr. McEwen. I mean, it's obvious that CC5 is not Mr. Parker's... Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Is CC5 your residency? I think it's CC7.
No, sir.
Avenue I and 90th Street West, your...
Yes, sir. The area street would be the same developer.
The same developer.
And under my three minutes for CC7, I'll have a couple of comments for that.
Before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions too, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
My question would be, why don't you feel good about this? Or you don't think?
It is the understanding of the residents in Westview that the developer was to complete the development before the assessment would be changed over. Mr. McEwen, is it Mr. McEwen?
Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. I was like, wait, I can read. Mr. Williams said that the change of assessment would happen after years of ownership. If that's the case, that was not shared with the residents, and again, I would concur that that would be a procedural thing. It is the understanding of the residents after our HOA meeting that that would not change over into the developer completed the entire community, which is 109 homes still need to be built. There are nine homes that are sitting vacant because of the water pressure issue. Speaking briefly to what Mr. Williams said about staff going out there, I applaud staff for continually to come out to the development, but as I was driving into the city council meeting this afternoon at 5:30, the Public Works was out changing the accelerators that have been out since the inspection, because they burn out for them to run it in order to pass the inspection. So it is no secret that maybe this development should not have happened, but the fact of the matter is, you have multiple families out there whose quality of life is nothing like what it is going to the bathroom here at City Hall, and that's unacceptable for any community. So I respectfully agree with staff coming out there. They've been to my house. The fact of the matter is, we know that Public Works was out again today to replace our accelerators. The agreement that was made between K-Hov, the city, the county of Los Angeles that sat at the table to say that we will have these certain things done before we move forward has been reneged on by the developer, and now the developer is trying to push forward, we think in an effort to ultimately abandon the property and leave us out there on an island on the west side on I and 90th.
And council members, if I could interject for just a moment, there's... I think there's a miscommunication of terminology here. Each time Mr. Parker has referred to accelerators being changed out by Public Works, he really means the county Public Works Department Division of Waterworks. It is not the city of Lancaster Public Works that's changing out these accelerators. On the other issue, he may be speaking of a different issue regarding landscaping, and I'd like to clarify that. If you're talking about interior to the tract landscaping, if you're talking about along the perimeter...
Yes, sir.
Okay, that perimeter landscaping is what I was referring to.
And that's what we're referring to.
Okay.
The perimeter landscaping was our understanding at our HOA meeting, that that would not be transferred over to the city until the development was done.
Is there interior landscaping to the tract that is part and responsibility ultimately of the homeowners association, common landscaped areas?
There are common areas of the houses that are joined each other. There have been no acceleration of the development, so we have no park area, we have no open areas. We have 23 homes on two blocks, and we have a lot of dumber weeds and dirt.
Those interior common areas that will ultimately turn over to the homeowners association will not be turned over until the full tract has been developed. That may be where the confusion exists.
Okay, and that might have been the miscommunication of the staff from K-Hov who explained it to us just a week ago. And again, our effort is to make sure that they live up to the agreement that they made with the city, that they made with those homeowners. In these issues that touch home, it is sometimes difficult to separate yourself from business and what is personal. Having five women in my house and not being able to flush the toilet, or not being able for everyone to take a shower at 7:00 in the morning, I don't know about your house, but it's a crisis where I live. Okay? I've been married 25 years, and for the first time, I'm scared that I might not make 26. It was not her fault. We believed in the home, we believed in the developer, we believed in the standards of this city. So I'm not here to argue about what part the county has. I know what part the city has. I'm very clear in the county. I'm very clear in the negotiations that are ongoing even today. I'm also clear that K-Hov has come back to the table and asked to renegotiate what they sat down and agreed to. What the homeowners would like is for K-Hov to finish the development, keep their agreements that they made with each one of those homeowners that went in there and bought a property, and make sure that our quality of life is no different than yours, or the mayor's, or anyone sitting in this room.
My question before Mr. Williams speaks. With the information that Mr. Williams has passed back, does that help any or not?
I think it helps in getting the information out that the outside perimeter of our community is an automatic transfer after one year of ownership, if I'm understanding Mr. Williams correctly. Yes?
After the improvements have been accepted by the council, then one year thereafter.
And what are the improvements that you're talking about?
Talking about the landscaping along the perimeter, outside perimeter.
Okay, so once they've completed that and that is accepted by you after one year, that automatically transfer.
Correct.
I think that that brings clarity, and will be clarity to the group. The group is not opposed to making sure that we're in a scenic place. We really love where we live. And there are other ladies that at such time will have the opportunity to speak, but that brings great clarity to me, at least at that part of the process. And so with that, I'll accept what Mr. Williams has to offer and take that back to the group.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. McEwen. No, it's horrible today. It was horrible this afternoon, it was horrible this morning. It literally... You literally sit the coffee pot up under the water, and then you walk away and come back, and then eventually it will fill up, and you can make your pot of coffee. That's...
That was today.
That was this morning, when I laughed at 6:00. This afternoon, because I thought the meeting was at 5:00 here, I came early, rushed out of the house at 4:40, they had two crews putting in the new accelerator pumps at the temporary station. And the issue here has to do with, they had to add a temporary station with flow surge tanks and surge and accelerators to push the water out to the track. The agreement is that that will eventually be moved into where the drill is being built in the common area of the community, but that in fact is a temporary fix to the solution. It does not... The pipeline, as the mayor pointed out when he first came as an engineer, should have a way to come back. There is no way for that to come back. So moving all of that equipment into our development will give us the same pressure you have, but any failure of that system, we go back to the drip-drip, and I'll be living with one of you when I knock on your door.
So I got your answer to the water?
No, sir.
Mr. McEwen, it's obvious to me that your CC5 is a separate project that has nothing to do with something that has the same water. But CC7, my only question is that landscape maintenance is operated still. The landscape maintenance is going to be using water in order to maintain the landscape. Now, if we take that over exactly, we should their water pressure and all this is necessary, we actually should consider, you know, not taking this one yet because this will do with drainage or something else that was convenient, and we're taking it, that would be something different.
I think that's really a question for Mr. Williams. And it's... Just an observation, if the landscape is already in there, then it's using water today. Whether we accept it or don't accept it isn't going to change that condition.
And frankly, the chances are that so long as it's under the control of the developer, it'll use more water than if the city were to be operating it. We generally find that, and it is accepted practice and a necessary practice, that when landscaping is first put in, you have to irrigate it more in its early stages so that it becomes established until such time as it is established, and then you can cut back on the water usage. Offhand, I don't remember precisely when that landscaping was completed, when it was all fully installed, but it has been within the last month and a half that staff has inspected and found it to be meeting the needs of the conditions, or the conditions were met for that improvement. We continue to work with the county waterworks and Hovnanian to try to see if there is not some additional way that we can improve services. I have personally talked on several occasions with people from waterworks about this situation, and they have also expressed their feelings that they have met the intent and the objectives of their particular agency in this case. We appreciate the circumstances under which Westview Estates property owners presently are living. It sounds like it does vacillate between good pressure and bad pressure. I wish we could catch it at a time when it was bad pressure, but so far, our inspections have not found that to be the case. The one other thing I wanted to say is that I do know that waterworks will continue to try to find a long-term solution. It is possible. Most recently, I suggested to them that perhaps they are completing an additional loop system with the tract.
That's the problem right there, yeah.
But we normally don't find that to be the case for short-term situations. In the case of Westview Estates, Hovnanian has actually constructed more than the 23 homes, and we have not allowed them to have additional certificates of occupancy, holding up all of that until a final resolution of Westview Estates' needs are materialized, if you will.
Can't they put on a continuous pressure monitoring system that continues?
It's my understanding that waterworks has done that. I don't have that information personally at hand.
So then that ought to show what happened 24 hours a day.
In fact, now that you mention it, and I think about it a little clearer, I do recall my staff advising me that such pressure meters that read consistently and constantly have been installed and operated for some time, and they have found to be within, you know, the code requirements for water pressures for a single-family residential property.
I guess what I'm thinking, Mr. Williams, is a static water pressure meter, which will go up and down based on what's going on, will not do it. They gotta have something that's going to record on some kind of a map somewhere so that it shows what it was every minute that it moves.
Well, again...
They don't have that, or do they?
No, they do have a, you know, a recording system that has been installed to measure water pressures over long periods of time, to monitor that up and down motion. And even in having done that, they have found the results back and then that water pressures met code requirements. That information, if it hasn't been provided to Westview Estates, I know is available with waterworks because my staff has reviewed it.
Okay, come on, Mr. Parker.
Honorable members of the council, I respectfully disagree, not entirely with what Mr. Williams said, because he's getting information second-hand. In fact, they have put out gauges that show what happens during our peak areas. It does not show what happens from minute to minute. That's why they have all these surge tanks out there. They had to put in four surge tanks for that very reason, because sometimes the pressure's been so high that had you turned on the shower, it could have blew the showerhead right off and injured somebody severely. And we have pictures of the residents that will go to the side of their house to your regular spigot that you hook your hose to, hook up a pressure valve, and show you the excess pressure. It is part of the lawsuit that K-Hov is involved with. At this time, the residents have chosen not to push forward with the city because the city has worked in due diligence to try to help us, but we feel that we're coming upon where people want to push this forward, and it need not move until it is done properly, because once it's done, you can't go back and take those things back. So I understand they have put on valves, but as I said today, when it rains, they had to put up a gate around the accelerator because just the dust and the cactus were blowing in it interfering with the system. Then we had the accelerators blow out, then we had the flood down Avenue I, which we had where the street actually recessed, 5th Street, because the dirt was not packed correctly. Well, that flooded out the station, which put out the accelerators, which they were replacing today. So it is open to the element. I have a downstairs bedroom. I intentionally bought an extra bedroom in case one of my daughters came home. I'm more than willing to let people stay there and experience them themselves. It is not a joke. It is something that is very serious to every family that is out there, and you can have staff give a report, but if staff can't flush the toilet when they come to the house, or if a resident, God forbid, there's a fire out there and for some reason those fire extinguishers that we have in our homes don't work, then we're five miles from the nearest fire station, and we're in harm's way. So I respect everything that's been said. I understand what's going on day by day. It is a day-by-day battle for us to keep and maintain the quality of life that we have now. It gets to a point where you get tired of calling every day to report the same things that you've been reporting for the last 11 months. I, as you all know, am very diligent in following up on things. I too have failed in that because I was just tired of being tired. So if we need to document every minute that we're there that we have a problem, so you have that information, so you can again make some intelligent decisions, I don't think that the 22 residents will have a problem giving that information to the council, or all 22 residents coming here with their families to speak personally to the council.
I'm going to make a recommendation in a moment, but Mr. Cilio has.
Let me try and summarize a little bit, because I'm not an engineer, I don't understand loop systems, et cetera, et cetera. Let me lay out two scenarios. One is, because we have testimony that water just dribbles. Either the water pressure doesn't meet code, it's not high enough, and county waterworks has not held K-Hov to the standard they need to be held to, and they just don't have enough water pressure. Apparently, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, depending on the status of the equipment in the water system. One is, what can the city do about that? What leverage do we have over county waterworks to make sure that they're actually doing their job and holding the developer their feet to the fire? And two, let's suppose that the developer is meeting the requirements of the code, but there's still not enough water pressure for everyone in the tract to take a shower in the morning. What recourse is there either by the city or by the county in that? If the developer's meeting the code and it's not enough, is the standard, you're meeting the code, or do we know that you're getting enough water? I mean, is it... Are you meeting the words on the paper, or functionally, is there enough water there at the tap? I don't know.
Well, I can tell you that if it's not, if it doesn't come... I forgot what the standard pressure is, like, I don't know, minimum 40 or 45 PSI or something like that. What it used to be, I don't remember, but I'm saying if it doesn't meet water supply need, it doesn't meet the standard. And I guess that's where I am, okay?
I guess my question is, what can we as a city do to assist the residents to get their needs met?
All right. That's the question. That's a good question.
That's the good question. Well, I think it's what we've been doing, and at least attempting to do, over the past several months, and that's meeting with waterworks district, attempting to get a satisfactory system there. All the tests that have been run so far are showing that it meets building code requirements, but we have anecdotal evidence from the residents that it does not, and I've had a number of conversations with their lawyer about this. The only thing that we have control over are the issuance of the certificates of occupancy. If the contractor or builder meets the building code requirements, then we're supposed to issue the certificate of occupancy and not withhold it. And that's what was done. We received certifications from all of the appropriate agencies, including waterworks, that all the requirements had been met, and those certificates were issued. There's... I know there's a lot of arguing that goes on, and I've had lengthy, lengthy discussions with their lawyer about this, whether they really have met everything or not, and he has some good arguments, but I guess my recommendation right now is that we simply sit down and have a meeting with...
Yes.
Staff, the lawyer, property owner reps, if they want to be there, to really get to where this is and really identify what our options are in handling this. But I think we're very limited in what those options are. We deserve some time in the floor.
I would tell you, that was going to be my recommendation, that we do that. Now, I recognize that... Now, I recognize that as a council member, or mayor, or whatever, that I, you know, not supposed to go any further than staff, but in this case, I really want to see what the monitoring system looks like, how it's put together, how it records. I'd like to see that myself. Having done that for many years, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one other piece of information, it's purely just information. I'll certainly be happy to try to track down that information for you or anyone else to review, as may be available with Waterworks. In fact, I have a meeting with their upper management and the people that have been involved with the Westview Estates project tomorrow, and I'll raise it at that time.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to just share with you on an informational basis is the process of the city's issuance of certificates of occupancy. There are several inspections that take place by agencies outside of the city that is responsible for those particular installations, such as the fire department. They have to inspect fire flow at hydrants and at other locations. In this particular case, there are wet pipe sprinkler systems in each of the homes, so they have to be inspected by the fire department. They are not something that the city expects. Water installations, they too are, as I explained before, the responsibility, in this case of Waterworks, so they do the inspections. Each of those agencies, once they have inspected and they have satisfied themselves that their requirements have been met, then they sign off on the certificate of occupancy sheet, and it's the city's then position to issue that certificate of occupancy when all of those sign-offs have been completed, not to go back and to do separate inspections of fire systems, or water systems, or sewer systems, or whatever it may happen to be. Frankly, in all cases, we're just not the people who are qualified to do that. That's why there is a Waterworks. It's why there is a county sanitation district and a fire department. So, I just wanted to share that with you to let you know...
Appreciate that.
Again, I think the building official has done everything that is necessary and appropriate in this particular case, and he has my full backing that he has taken appropriate steps all along the way. But again, I will obtain, assuming it is available, as I previously understood, if it's not, I'll come back and let the council know it's not available, as Mr. Parker may have indicated, but tomorrow I will meet with them and I'll pass that along.
Is that a problem for you if we hold up on seven until we get further information?
I still do not believe that either of these items have anything to do with, you know, the issue of water pressure in the tract out there.
Okay, go ahead.
Five definitely, where I could hold another project hostage that's separately bonded, even though it's the same one. On number seven, I understand Mr. Williams says that the developer is watering those plants down. We even owe them.
But once the plants are ours, we have water, and that's water that should be watered to the residents. Maybe those plants shouldn't be...
Being watered at all right now?
And so, the water pressure is up, and if those plants die, and it's the developer's plants, they're gonna have to take care of it. And if it's ours, and we're using water...
Rather than...
Mr. Parker, being made up by all women in this house.
Um, we're responsible for it, because we're using water.
Subdistricts, so I'd like to continue myself.
I'd like to continue. I'd like to continue. Anybody else have any comments?
Hmm.
Go ahead.
What's the volume of water we're talking about? And does it affect the pressure if you water, say, at 2:00 AM as opposed to 7:00 AM? I mean, is there enough time for water pressure to build back up? Is this a big enough percentage of water use that it's gonna make two hoots and a holler? I don't know.
I don't know. That's why I would say continue.
That's why, yeah.
Get more information on it. Maybe allow K-HO, because it was taken out the agenda, I could make that a second item. They might be present here, and they can speak as to this particular item also. I don't think it's gonna hurt to continue it for, until the next council meeting or two weeks.
I'd like to do that.
For...
So, is that a motion to continue it?
Yeah, I'll move to continue. Consent calendar item seven.
I second that. Okay, now, are there other people who need to speak on that before we vote?
Not on CC-5, but we have CC-7.
Okay, that's the one we're concerned about.
Speakers?
Yes.
Yeah, before we vote, we have a question.
Before we vote, you bet.
Speaker is Michelle Allen.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Allen. I'm one of the residents of Westview Estates. This is my neighbor across the street, Kelly Dunn. We are speaking on behalf of a lot of the homeowners that could not be here tonight, who were very concerned when they saw, when I brought home the agenda for the city council and saw the landscape needs district motion on it. I want to stress the seriousness, because a lot of people are laughing and thinking it's kinda funny, and I want you guys to realize that it's not funny out there whatsoever. When we first started and lived in that community, our water pressures went down to eight, 8 PSI. My father and mother came from Oregon to visit. They had to take showers at night at 9:00, so that we would have enough water when we took our showers at 3:00 in the morning, so that the rest of the community would have enough water to take their showers. Now, we begged and begged and begged, city, county, K-HO, Hovnanian, to help us fix this. You didn't tell us that this was going to happen. Finally, the county water works came and said, okay, we're gonna put that accelerator out there, but it is temporary. It is only until K-HO finishes the job they were supposed to do in the very beginning. So, that accelerator is not a permanent fix. It is temporary. And while it has helped, just today, my water pressure this morning has gone from 58 to 30, and back and forth all day long. Now, I understand what has been said about the landscaping outside, and I want you guys to be aware that when you take that over, if you happen to water it more than it's being watered now, and I don't feel that it's really being watered that much now, because a lot of it's dead, but when you, as you change that and change the watering for that, you are changing how we are trying to negotiate the water between ourselves. We right now stagger everything so that we can water our lawns, so that they stay green, so we don't get cited by the city. We stagger our showers, we try to be mindful of what's going on in that community every single day. And as this continues on, and you guys keep going on, and things seem hunky-dory, pardon my expression, it shows a clear message to us and everybody that lives there that it's really not that big a deal. But you don't live out there, you don't, you're not experiencing this every day, every day.
Appreciate that.
And it's really not funny.
Understood. May I, would you wish to say something?
My family's lived in this community for over 90 years, so I'm a Lancaster resident, like, deep down, and I'm very disappointed in certain ways, because my husband and I moved out to this community, because we had hoped for this community, and the development, the developer has not yet met their part of the bargain, and part of, we were led to believe, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Homeowners Association, we were led to believe that our last Homeowners Association meeting, that the city would not take over the perimeter landscaping until the developer had completed the well that they were working on, and the developer has since...
Stopped the well.
Stopped the well completely and pulled down all construction.
They're not even gonna finish it.
We're very distressed by this. They pulled off all their crews, they pulled off all their equipment, and have just left. So, we feel like if they leave this, they're just abandoning us.
Okay, well, a motion is on the floor right now to hold that one until we can get some additional data to know what to do. And I, while I may differ with Mr. Williams, I sure want you all to know, from my perspective, and I don't know where the other council, I think they feel the same as I do. I'm a registered engineer myself, I've done it for years, but the man knows what he's doing from that point of view, so I want you to know that, even though I wanna hold this up until we can find out what's going on. And I personally, I don't know how my city manager will feel, if I, I just, I can do it on Sunday, if you tell me that, I can do it on Sunday, but I just gotta see the register, I gotta see how they, how it's hooked up, because I know it's not a loop system, and that's, that's just not gonna work right.
I'm for continuous, continuing this simply for the fact that until I heard this tonight, this is the first I've heard of it. This has sprung in me, and I think we need more information, we need to support these residents here, so, based upon what we've heard tonight, I don't see any way we can approve the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, if I can, Mr. Williams talked about the accelerator system, the young ladies, my...
Get closer to the mic there, if you would.
The young ladies, my fellow residents, talked about the temporary system. In the policy for the city, it says that no certificates of occupation will be issued on a temporary system. In speaking to the gentleman who actually wrote this policy to implement it, he admitted for electrical issues, but the way it is written, it applies to anything that is temporary as it has to do with a development. And I understand his point, and I think it's Mr. Neal, and he explained thoroughly what his thoughts were behind why he put that in. I think this applies to, because without those accelerators and those surge tanks that are on 87th and I, we have no pressure, and they only pass the test with that temporary system there. You remove that temporary system, no house passes. It is my understanding that the fire department has not resigned off, and that the county is staying steadfast that they're not gonna sign off, and so we're asking that the city support our residents and help us have the same quality of life. I mean no disrespect to my fellow residents with the candor I use, but I'm very comfortable down here, because I've been down here for the last 20 years.
Let me...
The young lady did express exactly how our residents feel, without candor, straight from the heart, and I'd ask that you respect that and receive that.
I'd like for you all to trust us on this one, and we'll delay that at least for us. I see all the heads are wagging here.
Can I add one thing? From where I sit, it seems like it is an issue between county water and the developer, but, and that might absolve us of some responsibility legally, but so what? I don't live there. You do.
Right.
And I think it is, if not legally, at least morally, appropriate for the city to act in whatever negotiation capacity it can, with leverage over the county or over the developer, to resolve your issue, because we've talked plenty about water in this chambers, and it's real personal when it's your toilet that won't flush, or your sink that won't fill up. And staff has heard us, and I fully suspect that they're gonna function in that role to facilitate whatever negotiations need to go on in as rapid a way as possible to come to a solution, because you flat need water. If we let this roll through the courts, it's gonna be five years before this is resolved, and that wouldn't be acceptable if I lived there. We hear what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and gentlemen, can we go ahead and vote on that? You can just, if you...
The motion to continue.
That is unanimous, and it will be continued, and anything else we need to do to that?
Was that for CC-7, correct?
That was seven, correct?
Yes. We need a motion on CC-5.
Second. That button's stuck, hang on. There we go.
We gonna do it again?
Do we get it?
I need you all to do that one again.
Unanimous and so ordered, thank you so very much. Mr. Williams, thank you so very much for looking into that. All right, I think we are there in terms of the consent calendar. That leaves me, as far as I can see, to public hearing number one. I'm gonna declare the public hearing open and take a staff report, I believe, from
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The item that's before you tonight is the consideration of an introduction of an ordinance that would amend the city's heavy industrial zone by allowing solar electric generating plants within that heavy industrial zone, subject to a director's review. Currently, that zone allows electrical generating plants, subject to a conditional use permit. However, when that ordinance was originally written, the only consideration really was a conventional electrical generating plant that would probably be gas or some kind of fossil fuel fired. Little bit of background on where this came from. You may recall that in October, you had a presentation given to you by representatives from a company known as E-Solar, and they were looking at the potential for creating electrical generating plants that were solar-powered. They were looking within the city of Lancaster at a potential site for a demonstration project. At that time, they were considering a city-owned site to the northwest of the Foxfield Airfield. In response to the council direction, which was to continue to work with this organization, we actually took it upon ourselves to contact and coordinate with Los Angeles County in regards to whether or not that particular type of installation would be appropriate at that distance from the airfield. Although they didn't tell us a flat-out no, what they did indicate to us is that because of its location, any kind of operation for the type of facility they were looking at would require review by the county airport land use commission, the federal aviation administration, and the Caltrans division of aeronautics. Given the timeframe that E-Solar is looking at for this demonstration project, they didn't feel that that site would be appropriate for them. That is why they are now looking at a location and have actually filed with the city an application for the creation of this demonstration project on the south side of Avenue G, east of the railroad tracks, which is in, as I noted, in the city's heavy industrial zone. The planning commission reviewed a potential ordinance in December that would have carried this amendment into both the city's light industrial and heavy industrial zones. However, what we found in dealing with the county, that if we amend our light industrial zones, because there are areas that we have in the city zoned light industrial that are affected by the Foxfield Airport land use plan, we would not be able to adopt this amendment without a review by the Los Angeles County Airport Land Use Commission. By revising this ordinance amendment to only affect the city's heavy industrial zones, we avoid that type of review, and as I said, the issue here really, from E-Solar's standpoint, is an issue of timing. The commission, however, did feel that this ordinance approach would be appropriate. They felt it was supportive of an overall effort that we see within the state of California and our nation as a whole in regards to looking at facilities that are more environmentally friendly and are more in the way of green power production. Staff has recommended to you approval of this amendment. It will allow us to continue to move forward with E-Solar and their demonstration project, and we would ask that you introduce this as a first reading at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question, gentlemen? Okay.
So, it sounds like, let's get a pitch in here, so we can be positively clear. What we're gonna do is we're gonna reduce some levels of regulation, stay business-friendly, and still deal with the potential negative consequences of a solar project. That sounds like a winner. That's what I heard.
Okay. Do we have any, thank you, Mr. Williams. Do we have any cards on this one?
No speaker cards and no communications.
No speaker cards, no communication. This is, I'm gonna, at this time, close the public hearing unless there are objections. If there are none, we close the public hearing, and at this time, council discussion or a motion?
Move to introduce ordinance number 898.
Second. All right. Please cast your vote. Unanimous and so ordered, that takes us down to the council agenda, council agenda number one, and Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of discussion, we're doing a lot of, a lot of conference discussions, we're needing to be, a lot of different areas have, a lot of, one of the items that go up when we're talking about the state's TV, or a lot of concentration, that's why this is... on, talking about stress TV or water conservation, that's why it's essential that we actually deal with our system, so you have, so you're Paul Dale, and also, and one of the things that we need to be, is we actually want the water conservation committee to look at, it's not, we have water, water vision committees that have a lot of different agencies that are part of it. Our bodies to cover a lot of different topics. But I'm looking at, at least, for water conservation in the city of Lancaster, we have a conference, a team, all of them, from each council. Because even the staff comes out with ideas, they still have to play back with us, because this would be a fire, at least a, a small committee of both councils. Then you can come up with a joint ordinance so that Palmeville and Lancaster are on same page, water conservations, who also, we would, we're, anything that we're fair to say, we have, we're talking about, we're, we're, Palmeville, and either, we, 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 also, a lot of it is, 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 to look into, possibly, Palmeville, and, and, you, look at, not necessarily a bad hobby, but one that has a very specific, very specific task, and that is to create-
What are the citizens doing?
More water conservation, or that's called, or water, you know, I think, seven, she wants to set it percent of the water, it's, 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 uh, yeah.
So you're looking for a target-oriented committee?
That's right. I'd like a consensus from the council to, to contact the city of Palmeville, form a committee on it.
I can support that.
I think that's appropriate, and that our water problem is not just city-wide, it's a regional problem. And if we can come up with regional solutions, maybe our ordinance, it might, Palmeville and Lancaster ordinances might mirror each other exactly, they might not. I think it would make sense if they're at least reasonably close to each other. It is the same problem, and I suspect a solution each city will look close to it.
Okay. I think we have some cards, but are there any other questions before we make a decision? Okay, I believe we have some cards on this one?
Yes, sir.
Just one, right?
Two.
Okay. We'll take two.
Our first speaker is David Paul, followed by Nicole Parson.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much.
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to do is apologize for last council meeting. As prepared as you try and be, there's always things that you never anticipate will happen. And I didn't mean any disrespectful delay in getting down here. I only took a minute and a half to talk about the water. We're back to the water. Thank you, Councilman Smith. We have to do something, we have to do it now. That's what I was trying to say before. Working closely with Palmeville will help, but I had an idea when I came here today. What we could do is we could ask, and I have a couple of these in my pocket on my little camera, for one week, citizens concerned about water, to take pictures of excess water they find being wasted, and send them in. I have dozens of these pictures where there's hundreds of gallons of water just being wasted down the street, and that seems to be a way that we can get citizens to also participate and be aware of this problem. And just one more quick thing before I sit down. Mr. Parker, I felt for him, but, you know, I've been talking about the role of the charter city, and one of the things you can have is your own municipal utilities, and we could have our own water district, and we could just start to do all this stuff right now for ourselves, negate a lot of the regulations that go along with that, and there's just tremendous advantages. So if we want to solve our water problem, we have to charter up, have our own water utility, our own power utility. We have to embrace the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nicole Parson?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm just so glad, just that we've seen in the paper that the particles of like drugs and stuff and pharmaceuticals, well, I'm so glad that, that recycled developments design, it had zero degradation, it proposed zero degradation of the water. And it's so funny, because for like the last couple of years, we were all, everyone was talking about the way that we were going to, our water, oh gosh, we're going to purify our water in the ground, and, oh, this is very hard. Okay, well, that's all, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your input.
That concludes the speakers for CA1.
Okay. Any further discussions?
No, I think we have a consensus.
Right? All right? Is that yes, by what? It's all right. Then go on to CA2, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm not sure exactly, about a year ago, you asked me, yeah, your business license had all businesses in Lancaster, all of them, our relationship, business license, and everything, for self-regulation, safety, we, 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 just recently, also, we gave permission to Sheriff's Department to look at illegal aliens that are actually being caught, and that was, to, in that, since we passed the business license, we've been, we've been trying to discuss and think about how we can actually, and it's been on the cyber, but it's sort of, before, like, my, thinking about what's happening, Animal Valley Hospital. Animal Valley Hospital is the second busiest-
You can't hear?
I'm speaking at the mic. Oh. Now you are, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Why don't you use mine for your presentation? It works too good.
Animal Valley Hospital. Can you hear me now? The second busiest hospital in the state of California. I believe it's one of the top 10 in the nation. There's over 106,000 visits per year. I think one of the busy hospitals in Chicago hit about 150. Our paramedic squad, 33, is the busiest in the county. The hospital spends $6 million a month on uninsured patients. And anecdotally, in southern cities as we are, a lot of those are illegal aliens. It also impacts our schools. Our schools have to try to go out and get bonds, because they're bulging at the seams. The attraction is jobs. And a lot of times, other cities have thought, well, what can you do? It's a federal problem. But we have this on our business license, but I think that we need to put some tooth to it. The paramedics have told me, and I confirmed this with the hospital also, with the CEO of the hospital, a lot of these uninsured, they use the paramedics and the ambulance as a taxi. They have the flu, they have a cold, they call 911. They know exactly what to say. They say, "I have chest pain," okay? Or fire department transports them. It takes that rig and those firemen out of commission for a while. Then the hospital gets done, finds out they, you know, they might have to treat them or whatever they're doing with them, and they got to get a taxi and pay for a taxi or an ambulance and ship them back. And this is impacting us, and then you're not even getting paid. The CEO of the hospital told me a lot of times, they'll check the social security number then, and it doesn't exist, or they don't even have a place to bill the people. So what I'd like to do is give, get a consensus from the council, and I've talked it over with the city manager and the city attorney. And I think one of the, one of the ideas would be that we would look at putting something in the budget coming up this July, that they would, that we would hire an agency or a company that would come in and audit 10% of our businesses in the city of Lancaster, to make sure that they're using, as we've already mandated, only U.S. legal workers, which is by federal law they're supposed to. Now, that would mean they would lose their business license immediately, but I think they would be put on notice, and we'd go through a process, and it's something that staff would have to look into to see the legal, I know that Mr. McEwen is telling me there's two competing case laws right now, one in Hazleton and one in Arizona, one from the Ninth Circuit that they're, that they're looking at. But I think that we need to go in there and put some tooth to what we've actually done. So they would go in, and I think one of the scenarios would be that if you found out that they were using, you know, workers that are not U.S. legal workers, that we'd put them on notice and say, you know, "You got 30 days to fix this, and come back and show us that you're, all your employees are legally here." And if not, ultimately, we'd pull their business license. And the attraction, then, is not here, and the impact that we have on our citizens, a lot of these agencies, the school district, they can't do anything. The hospital cannot turn away the patients, they can't turn away the students. But if they're not here, they're not going to be impacting our city, not only for the fire department, but the increased crime, the increase in the hospital, the increase of schools. So I'd like to get a consensus from the council that we give direction to the city manager and the city attorney to look at, to see what kind of program we could, they could come back and make suggestions to us. Give you your mic back.
100% support that. I don't have any problem with that, anything. Do we have any cards on that one? Oh, we have some cards on that one. You all want to hold up until we hear from the card?
Yeah, let's take the cards.
All right, let's go ahead.
We have two speakers. Our first person, our first speaker is David Paul, followed by Nicole Parson.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you again. Councilman Smith, thanks again. Two for two tonight. Two hours before council meeting tonight, my son fell in the driveway. He fell pretty hard. He could have broke his elbow, his knee. Fortunately, I didn't have to take him to the emergency room. In a perfect world, I might have been able to take him there, get treatment, have him home, and be back for council, but we know that's not happening. I used to be the director of environmental services at Animal Valley Hospital. We're responsible for getting you a bed when you checked in, and very familiar with what the problem here. Nothing has changed in the eight years since I left that position. This is what I was thinking about today. And I had a nice talk in the parking lot with another person today about this. It seems to me that we have to push, and with or without a charter, we have the ability to push. So just like with the human accountability project, trying to figure out what all this unenforcement costs, let's do that as a city. Let's just start tabulating what our paramedics are paying, and everybody else, our schools, for all these illegal services. Let's submit a bill to the federal government, and let's sue them to get it. We're not going to win, but at least we'll be the first city to do it. Other cities will follow us, and maybe then we can get some recourse. That's how we can push. That's what I want us to do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Nicole Parson?
Hi. I, my, my, since, since I tra, I, my, my name, my development name is trademark, I, that, and I, so my programs are a lot for use in commerce, and so, so I did one for fun, for immigration, or the standards, and what I'm really after is like an endorsement, because it, because this program or some of the programs fill state legislations or the allocations that give money to programs that don't have, that don't have actual programs. So, do you guys give proprietary information to, Mr. Smith?
What is your question?
I refer to the city manager. I'm not sure what subject you're talking about.
I'm not either.
Just, I mean, if I were to let you guys, like, to look at my intellectual properties, would you guys give a prior information received? So you can just use it again, so like, what happened to like the 35 slide, public service, and public safety thing that I gave you? I mean, because I've seen a lot of, a lot of, a lot of those programs used, you used it out, and then, but I still remember getting credit, so, so, so that's why? Because, I mean, I've always represented myself as recycled development.
If you're a vendor and submit something requesting that it can only be used as proprietary, then we would either choose to use it or not.
Oh, so since, oh, but so, since I, I didn't know, then, so you, that would be like you taking advantage, or that you took it as free?
I don't believe we use anything you submitted to create a problem.
Oh, okay. So if I bring you guys slides, I mean, if I, if I actually give, I mean, because every note, I mean, every note that I have, you know, I gave to you.
Okay, let-
If I bring proof of that, then what are we going to, what are we going to do?
Let me, let me, let me help you, Nicole, if I could. We want to resolve this CA2 if we could. And maybe later on, you can get a chance to talk about, you know, what you handed off to us, but right now, we need to resolve that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Not on that item, sir.
All right. Then, back to us.
Okay, first let me, let me say that this is a great proposal. I mean, very clearly-
I think it's very clear.
Very clearly, this is a great proposal. We've, we've adopted some ordinance over the, ordinances over the last year and a half or so regarding the illegal alien issue, and we've promised to continue to bring these back, since the federal government's failed miserably in this area and forced us to do some things, and this actually puts some teeth to an ordinance that we've already adopted, and that's important. Only downfall to it is it takes more out of the budget, which is a difficult time, but at the same time, it's important enough, because our residents have been clearly screaming for us to help in this area and do things, do things with it. So what I would say is, bottom line is, this is a great ordinance, and after we, hopefully we'll adopt it and find out what it's going to cost us, and do it anyhow, and then send the bill to the federal government. I mean, that's what we should do. We should get, we should adopt it, and then send them the bill and say, "We're doing it now. It's your turn. You should be paying the tab."
While I agree the feds should be paying the tab, I think it's going to be a waste of a perfectly good stamp. It's obvious that we all think that we have an issue with illegal immigration and their effect on our society that we live in. We instituted, we tightened our business licensing practices so that we could, businesses could only use U.S. legal workers, I think is the term we used. It doesn't mean you have to be a citizen, it just means you have to be here legally and you play by the rules. The one thing we have to be careful of, though, and that is potential unintended negative consequences. We need to make sure we look at, if we cite a business for having illegal workers, is what's going to happen? Are we going to find them monetarily? If it goes too far down the road through whatever process we use that we yank their business license, what do we do if that business provides a critical service? For instance, if AV Hospital were using illegal aliens to clean the floor, or whatever, cook food, or whatever it is, and we audit them again, and they're still using them, what do we do? Pull their business license? I don't think so. We're going to have to be careful in how we implement this. We all want to deal with people who break the law when they come into this country. But if you, if your punishment is so harsh that it also affects legal citizens, and whether they can get up and go to work in the morning, that's something we need to deal with. And people use the example of, okay, if their dishwasher is at a restaurant, and they continue to use them, and you close the restaurant. There's plenty of other restaurants. If it's a critical service for our society, that's not an option. We need to make sure that we have the flexibility in our punishments that we put out there. Again, whether it's just financial or closing their doors, that's just an issue, one of the issues we're going to have to look at as we implement this. But as a whole, yeah, it's, it's an issue we need to deal with, and I'm glad our city is taking it on. It's unfortunate we have to take it on, because as each member has said, the feds aren't doing their job. And just like Section 8, we had to step up and provide the funds to enforce what the county housing authority should be doing. We're delving into another area where another layer of government hasn't done their job, and our citizens are asking us to do something about it.
Okay. Well, I certainly have no problem supporting the request to turn this over to the staff and our city council to look into that, but for as I'm concerned, I can't even visualize somebody like the Yellow Valley Hospital or critical services like that not being willing to comply. I just, it would be hard for me to believe that they would not do that. So I'm totally in support of, let's turn it over to staff.
Thank you.
How soon do you want the report back? It will take us a little bit of time to work through this.
How much time do you need? How much time do you need?
I think it's something that, please, needs to be discussed. I'd love to see you Thursday. We saw out in this coming up budget, as Mr. Bozigan had talked about, you know, maybe the reports have to come back, as long as there's funds, whatever the funding is going to cost. I think that's something that's going to be a little bit short-term of the legal standpoint. Where I would suggest, just to make sure that I heard the direction correctly, is that I think there's two tracks. One is, one is, one is, that there's legal aspects, which the city attorney has to look into, and there's some things, as Councilmember Smith pointed out, that the federal government is struggling with, at least the courts, where there's two divergent opinions, so we'll look into the legal aspect. In terms of the budgeting aspects, what we will do is, we will look and see if we can identify a cost amount that it might cost to enforce this at 10%, 5% level, and bring that back, while it's definitely doing budget briefing. Obviously, if it's affordable, we'll put it next to the budget as well, too. But I think that's the track that we should take, find out how much it costs, find out if it's legal. And if we shoot for the adoption of the budget, as being, when we have, at least with the budget standpoint, a decision to make. I can't speak to the legal aspect.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
And I was just using AV Hospital as an example. I would never besmirch my own employer for the hospital CEO, if he's listening.
I'm sure they will comply.
Can I give their fine, right?
Okay, let's move on to city manager.
No announcements, sir.
Is Mr. Anderson here tonight? No, he's not. Okay. Nothing with city manager? Okay, how about the city clerk?
Sir, we have a few speaker cards.
All right.
This time is for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows for citizens to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on any of your concerns. However, your matter will be referred to the city manager. Please notice there are two lights on the podium. There is a yellow light that will come on when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light will come on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Needed, council will address your concerns during council comments.
All right.
Our first speaker is Jim Tolan, followed by Ray Shavira.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
I retired out of the Navy after 30 years, moved to Lancaster, many, many years in industry, and as a consequence, one of my tasks on Friendly Village, which is the second largest mobile home park in the state of California, is to be a parliamentarian. I'm looking at the costs of our operation. My conversations with waste management is such that they say they reconsider charges every July. I would ask Mr. Mayor if you would ask your staff to confirm that that is the only time that they redo charges, because I have evidence that they have done it arbitrarily and capriciously. Thank you.
You betcha.
Can you answer?
I'd like to, we will get more information from the gentleman.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Very succinct, very clear.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. My name is Ray Shavira. I'm speaking here as the president of the Sherwood Mobile Home Owners Association in Sherwood Park. The city clerk is passing to you a memo from our absentee management company in Roseville north, with respect to recent charges that have gone up, and recent increases in pickup times per week by waste management, in which we, the community that pays the bill, has not been consulted. We believe what Mr. Tolan referred to here a little while ago, that your contract with waste management expires, I guess, from July to July 1. We would like to consider, that you consider public input with respect to those charges, because we've been trying to communicate with certain officials of waste management, and we don't know what justification they have for recent increases in the last year, increase after increase, not only in charges, but in telling us that you need four-day pickup instead of three. They took one picture. We're taking several. At the next council meeting, we expect to have two weeks of pictures to show you that there is no need for four-day-a-week trash pickup. The truck driver himself has told me, "Why am I here four days a week? You have no need, except for three." So we're trying to document as well as they are, but we think we ought to be involved in the process of not only paying the bill, but providing input to you. As senior citizens on fixed income, living in affordable housing, give us some kind of input, opportunity, so we can say, "Yes, it's a fair charge, and we're willing to go along with it." That's all we ask, equity.
So let me make sure I understand your request. Your request, then, is?
That you put on the agenda for council discussion next time, this particular issue of community input, when your contract comes up with waste management, for renegotiation of whatever. And also, that you join us, as you did earlier, with the community that Darren Parker represents, as much as you were to them, that you could be the same way with us with respect to our particular senior citizen needs. I'm sure we'll have to work it out. I gave a copy of what we passed out to you to Janet Crawford, who's an old friend, and I'm sure that as public relations manager for waste management, she will see to it that we get our act together. Thank you, sir.
No, go ahead. Maybe you can answer my question, what you were going to say.
What I would suggest is we'd like to work with Mr. Shavira and staff. As you know, we have someone who administers our contract with waste management.
Right.
It would be appropriate to work this through.
Okay.
Right, plus there's a contract, I mean, the contract between, with the city and waste management is specific as far as what the rates are.
Councilmember Vosaki, you know, I'm really perplexed by this old presentation. Waste management adjusts their rates once a year.
Right.
But it sounds to me like the difference in the rates that these gentlemen are referring to has to do with the number of pickups, or the frequency of service at their mobile home park.
And the monthly bill, sir.
That is not something that the city regulates. It is the property owner or the person who's submitting requests for that service that asks for, once a week, I think in your case, you probably have three-yard dumpsters or something that trash is collected in. So I think that it's probably property management out there who has asked for increased service, but as Mr. Bozigan suggested, you know, we will be more than happy to work with Mr. Shavira, Mr. Tolan, to work this out.
Can I clarify?
Go ahead. Let me answer my question.
Mr. Shavira, can you clarify, what I think you're inferring is that waste management increased their number of per-week pickups of trash, and that your bill went up based on that they're coming more frequently? Is that?
There are two separate issues, but in one case, it happens to coincide from three to four. We've communicated with staff in both Public Works and Housing. Staff, I guess, from those departments have also communicated with the gentleman who wrote this memo. He's an absentee landlord of sorts. He assumes that waste management is telling the truth. Hey, we have a picture here of an overloaded bin, and for that, we get charged for the rest of time immemorial. We have no piece of the action. We don't know what's true.
Has management clarified to you whether they asked for increased pickup, or waste management just said, "You need more increased pickup"?
Waste management told this gentleman that he needs more trash pickup. He arbitrarily said, "Go ahead." In fact, staff has told me, "If he wants five-day-a-week pickup, we'll do it."
Then I would, from what I've heard, I would concur with Mr. Bozigan, that it's wholly appropriate that the city involve themselves in the situation and clarify just whose responsibility is what under the city contract, because it is the city that has the contract. And let's see if we can bring some clarity, both for the residents, for waste management, and the property company.
Hopefully by your next meeting.
Well, we...
Work with staff and see what the issues are.
Okay. Very good.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Any further speakers?
Yes, sir. Nicole Parsons, followed by Briar Rose Jacobson.
Ms. Nicole, are you sure? Okay.
Hey, I have this thing. Okay, say I'm sitting here with these two guys, right? We're all different enough. And then, okay, so I was all going to Mark, so let's say that he's a power broker, okay? And then so, but, so he's like telling you guys, council, you know, okay, that this is what you guys are going to do, and you guys are always just so fair, and I told you guys a long time ago that your job is to be committed, because it's sort of like, have you go like this in the corner, because it's so hard. And then, say Mr. Williams just does just whatever you guys want. Okay, well, there's this movie, and it's called The Proposition, and it says, "This land will be civilized." And then, okay, and so I'm telling you guys, I'm going to give you guys all this, and I just want you guys, please, if you guys think it's worthy, please, will you guys watch it? And if you guys watch it, whenever you guys leave your desk, your position, leave it on your desk for the next person. Okay, because what I want to, what I saw in it is recapent, you have to do recapenter, recipensible, and recapency. Okay, so, okay, and so, so these guys are right here, and so you never know who it's going to fall on, and it falls really hard. Okay, and we have God and all that, but it doesn't, I mean, there's something else besides that, Mr. Mayor, okay? And this movie's really good, too.
Okay, you can go ahead and give it to him. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm not sure if all of our council knows. Was everyone at the Business Outlook Conference?
Uh huh.
If you read your handout carefully, one of the nominees for Business Person of the Year was Nicole Parsons.
Thank you, guys.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to be part of helping this.
We believe, we really do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Briar Rose Jacobson.
Good evening, council. How is everyone this evening? My name's Briar Rose, and I'm Miss Eastside 2007, and I'm also a senior at Antelope Valley High School. And I really wanted to just talk to you guys about my senior project a little bit and ask for support for it. I'm working with Yes To Kids and Spa One, which Yes To Kids is the Child Abuse Committee in the Antelope Valley, and Spa One is service planning Area One. And pretty much, we're putting on a battle of bands to help bring awareness to bullying in schools and child abuse in the Antelope Valley. And we know those are two of the main issues that we, like, come across in this city and in our schools, and it's pretty bad. You know, you hear on the news, kid was in a car, you know, ended up in the hospital, kind of happened in Lancaster. So, you know, we want to bring awareness to this, to the city. So we're hosting a battle of bands for our youth, so they know about it, and so the word gets out there, and I'm really, really looking for support for this. I mean, in any way possible. We're raising money, and we're taking donations, and the money will go to Yes To Kids, and it's to help prevent the child abuse in our Antelope Valley, in our home, where we live. And it's going to be at George Lane Park in Cortezo on March 28th, and that's a Friday, and it's going to be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And I was just wondering if there is any way possible that the council could possibly help me get the word out, or support me in any way.
Well, actually, what you're doing right now puts the word out. Everybody that's here has heard that. I don't know what else we can do with that.
The date is March 28th. That's a Friday. I believe it's in about two weeks. And it's from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the gymnasium at George Lane Park. So I hope everybody can spread the word and come and support and help to spread awareness of child abuse and bullying in the Antelope Valley.
Are you familiar with the Child Abuse Center that we have here on Fire?
A little bit, not that much, but a little bit.
I think that would be a really good thing for you to do, is just to, you know where I'm talking about?
Oh, Children's Center, yes.
Yes, Children's Center? Have you been there?
Yes.
And you've told them what your project is all about?
Yes.
Okay. Are they willing to commit to do something for you there?
I believe they hung up a couple of my posters. I have some posters, and I believe they hung up a couple of those, and they tell people who come in and out, so.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate your sensitivity to raising the awareness, because that is a great, great need, believe me. That's a great need.
And I'll leave a flyer and a poster with you guys. That way, you guys can know more information, and if you guys would like to attend, it would be much-needed help. And it's $5 for entrance, and that's donation, $5.
That was my question, because you said fundraiser, and you hadn't mentioned money yet, so $5.
I was getting there.
Make sure you, well, yeah, you make sure we all get a copy of the flyer and...
You can pass that over to them.
I have Terry check with us and our availability and calendars for that, too.
I have a bunch of stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, young lady. We really appreciate it. Other speakers?
Captain, who's our speaker?
Okay. Then that takes us to council agency comments. Do we have any? All right.
Not here.
Well, let's see. If we come to the adjournment, which was, our next meeting is Tuesday, March 25th, in this room, but tonight, tonight, I would ask the council to allow us to adjourn the meeting in memory of Danielle Marvin Lewis, a native of Lancaster, former Lancaster Planning Commission Chairwoman, Lancaster Chamber of Commerce President, and President of Stephen B. Marvin Real Estate. So very, probably some of you know her. I certainly know her. And we'd like to adjourn the meeting in honor of her, and we have a certificate to be signed by everybody.
Of course.
That's all right. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting till March 25th, 2008, 6:00 PM, in this room. And ladies and gentlemen, again, thank all of you for being here tonight.